I have called to order the Bryan City School Board of Education for the purpose of a public hearing meeting. Kevin, you want to call the role?
Scott.
Here.
Ben.
Here.
Deb.
Here.
Dustin.
Here.
Mike.
Here.
Thank you.
Kevin, I'll just turn it over to you.
Actually, we'll turn it over to Mr. Bassett, who is going to address federal funds for fiscal year 2022.
I'll turn it over to Mr. Bassett. Talk about the fun number stuff. Can you hear me okay without the mic? First of all, Title I, just kind of going through our federal programming grants. Title I, again, based on low-income students, it actually comes from our census data, where they derive those numbers from, and it's to improve student achievement in language, arts, and math. This year allocation was three hundred and thirty-two thousand seven oh two. With all of these grants, part of it goes to the pro piano schools, the non-public, and that share was three thousand four forty-eight. We act as a fiscal agent for those funds for St. Patrick's for that. We use those to offset salaries and bring the benefits of our teachers for Title I. Title II-A, preparing, training, recruiting high-quality staff, is also a class-size reduction grant, which is how we choose to use it. We offset a class-size reduction in grade one. We use that to pay for a teacher in grade one. Allocation this year was fifty-eight thousand eight fifty. Twenty-one ninety-three of that, of course, goes to St. Patrick's. LEP Title III, Limited English Proficient, we're in a consortium there. We don't have enough students to qualify for the full grants. We're in a consortium with the ESC for those services. We are allocated fifteen hundred and ninety-three dollars. We use that for tutoring. We actually have anywhere from three to five kids at any given time receiving some tutoring in Limited English Proficient. Title IV-A, it's a well-rounded education grant, really focused on the social-emotional learning of students. Our allocation is twenty-eight thousand and thirty-two dollars. Non-public portion is twenty-three twenty-four. We use that for our school social workers. So I said that for the the social-emotional piece for that, offset some of our, also our two school social workers. Special education IDAP, it's our big one. Allocation is four hundred and ninety-seven thousand seventeen dollars. Thirteen-two-seventy of that is the non-public portion of that. We use that for special education teachers, fringe benefits and salaries K to twelve do that. For Title I, I should mention, we use that at the elementary. We are, there's two types of Title I. We are school-wide Title I, which means we don't have to target specific students for our Title I funds. We can help every single student. Some schools are targeted assistant, what they call, they have to pull certain groups of kids, and that's only kids that can help with the title money. We're fortunate enough to be school-wide, where we can help all of those students do that, do that program. Early childhood special education, it's a preschool grant for special education and preschool. Allocation is fifteen thousand nine ninety-eight. We use that for a teacher's, teacher's salaries in preschool. So total federal fund grant, nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand six eighty-three. That is this school year. Numbers range pretty close to that each year. They fluctuate a little bit. We receive those allocations in June, and we submit our application by July 1 in the summer. But just really quick, questions on those grants, how we're using the money? Just real quick on wellness. We do receive some wellness dollars, four thousand four hundred eighty dollars this year for wellness. Again, goes through our insurance provider, goes through that. Some of the things they do with our wellness prize money is, this year they had a MyCoach app. It's an app where they put on their phone and log their physical activity. They gave out some prizes in the fall for people actually downloading the app and creating account and just doing that. From March, they did a step challenge. It was building versus building. Who could walk the most steps and log their steps, just to keep the staff out, rooting it a little bit. And at the end of the year, that our staff practice, we have a big prize draw in your tickets by participating in the wellness. And there's been really nice, nice prizes at the end of the year for those. Food service update for the school year. We're still operating on the seamless summer option, which means free type A lunches for all of our students and breakfast. They did extend that program through August, September, and we're waiting word from USDA. They said in April they would come out and tell us the plan for next school year. So we don't know what next school year we're operating on, the seamless summer, like we currently are, or back to the national school lunch program. Currently, we average about eleven hundred type As a day. Anything with mashed potatoes seems to be the problem. French toast sticks is number one, but after that, if you look at it, tomorrow's popcorn, chicken, and mashed potatoes will be over probably twelve hundred tomorrow. Chicken strips, mashed potatoes, chicken and noodles, and mashed potatoes. Kids like mashed potatoes, which we can serve them every day, but that would be out of compliance. So we can't do that. Try to get them on the menu sometimes once a week for that. We do receive reimbursement for the seamless summer option. There's three meals of three dollars and fifty-one cents per meal. We also get an extra seven cents per type A because our menu is in compliance with the guidelines. They look at that every three years and say, yep, you're good. You're meeting the daily requirements for the extra seven cents. Breakfast, we have seen an increase in the breakfast participation, about two hundred and twenty a day, which is not a lot. In typical year, we'd be about a hundred before that with the free breakfast. And we receive two dollars and twenty-six cents per breakfast for reimbursement. There's no extra kick there for following their nutritional guidelines, but... Questions on all that? I rattled a bunch of stuff off. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Okay, so we will then roll into calling to order the regular meeting of the Bryan City School Board for Monday, April 12. So if you join me, I'm in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kevin, your call.
Scott.
Here.
Ben.
Here.
Deb.
Here.
Dustin.
Here.
Mike.
Here.
Thank you.
We need the approval and signing of the March regular meeting minutes. I trust that everyone had a chance to look at those. Didn't know if there was any additions, corrections, changes. When my hearing done, I would accept a motion to approve those meeting minutes. So moved? Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Thank you, Ben.
Scott.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Dustin.
Yep.
Mike.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm not aware of any public participation tonight, so we'll move on down to communications. And I think, Mark, do you have a report from Syndra?
I do, I do. So I will read our four-county report here from Syndra Keeler. She says the year is beginning to wrap up for our four-county students. The National Technical Honor Society induction is being held at the end of this month on April 29th, where we have forty-six juniors. The inductees will learn who or if they've made the National Honor Technical Society in a few days. We still don't have those names yet. Those will be coming soon. Four-County Career Center had to make the very tough decision to move their Senior Recognition Day, which is graduation from four-county career center. They had to make that a virtual event yet again this school year. They host that in their diesel lab, which if you've been there, is a massive lab, but unfortunately, to cram over a thousand bodies in there and have them six feet apart, it's just not going to work. So they are again holding that virtually this year, and that's set for May 25th at 7:00 PM. The Health Occupations Students of America, otherwise known as CLOSUP, we have some students from Bryan qualifying for the state competition. They include Brianna Razer, Madeline Herman, Caleb Giroff, Haley Mosher, Jaylen Paul, Quinn Middleton, Trinity Beverson, Madison Hall, Faith Cook, Reed Salguero, Mallory Frye, Kyla Day Hemingway, Scout Smith, and Keegan Nichols. Congratulations to all of them on qualifying for the state competition. And they have some summer camps coming up, June 7th through 10th. They have some courses in which they have some free interactive hands-on fun summer camps. So they ask you to check those out and go to fourcounty.net, see if they apply for your age levels and to register on the website. Thank you, Syndra Keeler, for the report.
Excellent. Okay, so we'll move on with our monthly spotlight, and tonight we are going to highlight and spotlight for Bryan High School pep thing.
Yes, it's a little unusual to have Mr. Paul and your students in spring, and you guys can come on up here.
Come on up, guys.
But due to COVID, we had limited attendance at our board meetings in the fall, and they were able to get in marching at home games this year during the football season, but they've also been participating in concerts, and they have some coming up this spring. So thought it'd be a great opportunity to have them showcase some of their work. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Paul to say a few words about the program this unique year.
Yeah, so it's been a very interesting year, I'll say. We started off with a whole bunch of COVID precautions that have continued through this year. Let's see, I'm Chris's sousaphone is a bell cover. All of our brass players have them right now, created by myself and a couple of band parents who helped out. We've also been social distancing, which included changing the complete setup of the band room, and students have been wearing masks when they've not been playing, as you can tell right now. We did marching band with an adjusted band camp. We still did our three usual halftime shows and our end-of-season concert, which was awesome. We then rolled into pep band, where we played at all the home basketball games on Friday and Saturday nights, just like usual. Then we rolled in concert band season, which is where we are now. We recorded our February concert, and are looking forward to a concert with a live audience in May. We did move that location into the gym to allow for more space. We also had a trip to Toronto planned. Unfortunately, that got sidelined, but we are hopeful to have one next year. Then looking at the five through eight bands, the younger students, they recorded their fall concert and then livestreamed their February concert, which is having them at the usual times, again, with all those masks and bell covers and that. They are also looking forward to an in-person concert in May, and we are looking forward to an upcoming virtual clinic with composer Adrian Sims, who wrote a piece that the seventh and eighth graders are going to be performing together, which is pretty cool. I'm also teaching a new world music class this year, which has been going really well. A couple of highlights so far, the students have gotten to try their hand at African drumming. We also learned some basic steps to some various Latin-style dances that we studied. We video chatted with a friend of mine, who is a jazz musician, when we studied jazz, and with a lady named Hila Zamir, who is studying clarinet for a doctoral degree at Bowling Green, but she's from Israel, and her family is half Bulgarian and half Iraqi. So we got to talk to her during our middle of the street. So that's what's been going on in the band department. Without further ado, our small but mighty pep band tonight is going to play a fight song. Thank you for having us. And we can go ahead straight out the door that we came in.
I guess before you go.
Unless it is.
We'll see if, one, if there's any questions for Mr. Paul or any of the students
Yeah.
in the band.
Mr. Paul, where are you guys thinking maybe you'd like to go next year for your trip since Toronto got sidelined this year?
We actually are really hoping for Washington DC, hopefully in a joint trip with the choir, since they are, it's their turn in the rotation to go next year. So Mr. Lebo and I have talked extensively and have actually turned it up, proposed itinerary to Mr. Ray. I don't have time on the topic.
We have time tonight, so we'll be talking about very good.
You guys heard nothing, because the rest of the band is at that again.
It's public now.
Yes, evidently.
So how challenging is it in the, I mean, to be in band with masks and social distancing and make it all come together like one?
It has been tricky at times, for sure. The biggest challenge, and I think the students would agree with me, is that the band room is set up very strangely. In an ordinary year, when we are rehearsing the band, we have the podium, and then the students are all in arcs, and so we're a lot more compact, and we're shallow but wide. In the current configuration of the band room, the only way that I could get enough spacing between the chairs or get the maximum amount of spacing, while still having the straight lines that were being recommended by our professional organizations, was to turn the whole band room ninety degrees. So we're very narrow and wide or deep right now. So percussion and the low brass, I drove our way out in the marnia. So it's really tricky for us to learn to balance and to hear each other, because we're very spread out right now.
Yeah.
Yeah. Earlier today, the clarinets and baritones have the same, were playing the same part, and I don't think they could hear each other. No? Yeah. Because they were very far apart. But we're making it work.
Sure.
So.
Sure.
Anything else?
I certainly look forward to when we can all enjoy you in person again in the full band.
Thank you.
Certainly hoping that's coming soon, because I know I would have really missed it and missing you on the field and experiencing your music lives. So thank you for your efforts to provide opportunities despite the challenges. Thank you.
Absolutely. And I know the students are looking forward to a hopefully more normal year, near year next year, where we can go to all of the away football games and things like that. So, yeah. Anything else? I feel like I couldn't tell you guys anything here. Okay? Well, thank you again for having us.
So, yeah, while you guys are up here, we'll do a board picture with all of you.
Absolutely.
All right, so back at it. Under communication, we have the administrative reports, so...
So as you just noted, there's a wealth of athletics.
Right.
We are shy of our administrators, so I'm stepping in for a few of them tonight. I'm going to start athletics for Chad Savage. So athletics likes to promote summer dates right now, so they've established the summer week of July 4th through Sunday 11th as the dead week, and that becomes the week that most of our athletic families abide life or vacations or going out of town or maybe just some R and R. It's a good week that pairs up with the Fourth of July holiday, so that is out there and posted, so all coaches and activities do work around that week. So it's always nice to have that, that dead week, and that's usually when we also redo our gym floor with our maintenance crews. So we are hosting a ton of tournaments this spring. I just will note that this comes down to the fact that our facilities are absolutely beautiful, well-maintained by our community at the parks and also with our maintenance crews. So we are looked upon to host quite a few tournaments. Not to rattle through these very quickly here, but we're having a state team tennis match, we're having doubles tournament matches, more tennis matches. We're hosting the D2 section of boys tennis and our new courts over here for the first time, which is a nice rendition, or I guess a compliment to our courts and facilities to be able to host at the state level. We're hosting a junior high NWOL track meet, and then we are hosting both softball and baseball, not for Bryan, but for Division Four and our beautiful park system with our baseball and softball field there. So not only is the athletic department managing our athletics, when all these tournaments come into play at the state level and/or the district or regional level, we're hosting all those teams as well. So they do, they have a busy six weeks ahead of them. Next up, the Spring National Signing Day. So they did a winter slash fall signing day, where we have three more seniors who have committed to play at the collegiate level. So we will do an event on May 5th at 2:15 PM. That'll be in the Commons over at the high school, and Brevin Decroche committed to play baseball at Owens Community College, Caleb Kepler committed to play football at Ashland University, and Shaolin Miley committed to play basketball at Lord's College. So we wish them the best of luck, and that'll be a nice ceremony to honor their decision. So that is the athletic report.
Chad. Back to you.
Just a couple of updates. First of all, testing is off and running. We tested third, fourth, and fifth grade language arts last week in this building. We'll start high school, middle school testing tomorrow, next two days, English, language arts, and then we'll transition to next week, starting with math. I just want to say thanks and kudos to our tech department. If you walk in here on maybe last Tuesday, Wednesday, we're testing anywhere from two hundred and fifty to three hundred kids on a device, and it's flawless. Like, there's just, we have no system issues, no lag time. We're getting third and fourth graders logged in, and they're testing. So just a great system they've developed. Kudos to our teachers, having our kids well-prepared, just how to log on, how to navigate these tests, because it is, it is scary for a third grader to try and type in a big, long password and then test, but they do it. It amazes me every year, and I'm watching, they're just typing away, and I'm walking testing, I'm good now. So just kudos to them. I mentioned last week that we did in April, our last month, in April, the elementary in-service day, looked at some data from our STAR testing in language arts and our iReady math system. We talked about earlier when I brought some of this data from the way, we talked about the COVID slide and how it was really effective in math. We kind of saw a trend that we always see in reading. So reading, we were about seventy-two percent last time we did it in the winter. We tested about a month, month and a half later, and we're sitting same percentage, and that, I don't know, what were we saying percentage? I look back, and it's typically the trend, that third test in our STAR system seems to be really tough, and we just kind of plateaued. And actually, there's some years where we've gone down, so it's probably good that we just kind of stayed right there. But I'm really excited about math. We went up twenty-two percent in math in a month of our proficient students. So we are coming back. I think we're gaining some of that COVID slide that they talked about in math, so we're really happy in that regard. Questions?
That's it for the STAR and iReady, and then for the year?
Yeah, we do it three times. Every year we can, take a look at it again. Typically, we're testing now.
Sure.
So we want that data until we, before the state test.
So year to year, you feel confident that our kids are parallel on a normal year?
I'd say pretty close. Yeah, I would say pretty close. Mrs. Cox and Billy talked about that somewhat, too.
Yeah, I would say the same thing. Those students that are on reading improvement and monitoring plans, they will test in STAR one more time to update that plan, and they'll do that in May, and those will go home to parents. That's only for K through three students, if they're on a reading improvement and monitoring plan, but, yeah.
Select students, yeah.
Well, it's good to hear that they're moving forward. I mean, it'll be good to hear what happens next week or next month with the ones that are going now for the rest of the whole.
Yeah, we won't find those results till, the state test till they're launched this school year.
Oh.
Those will come out, those will come out June. We always wonder immediately back how their kids do. They're, they'll leave these to June usually. This year, there's even talk that maybe some of the schools are still online testing later, they may not come out before, which is hard to, hard to plan, right?
So that's the benefit with STAR and iReady, because you can get that data.
Right.
And respond to it immediately.
Yeah, so that's why we're doing some of those internal.
Right. It's just important that we have those in place to respond rather than waiting for state results right now.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good. Well, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elementary, Mrs. Cox.
So we had a professional development day or in-service day for our teachers on April 5th, and we had our teachers participate in a Wonders presentation. Wonders by McGraw-Hill will be our next reading series for the next five years, kindergarten through fifth grade. So our teachers participated in a 101 of Wonders. They were able to, because some of our teachers are so dedicated and they want to work, they want to get things prepared for the following year. It just helps with them with organization. But they, it was a virtual training, and they were able to learn sort of the ins and outs of where resources are with the online version within their teacher's guide. And then when we come back in August and September, we'll have some more PDs, professional development, for them to become familiar with the curriculum. One of the big things was putting our Wonders curriculum with our Letterland Phonics curriculum and sort of marrying those together to see how they do. So that will be one thing we continue to watch. And they do have other online assessments, which is nice. We can look at those, look at those items. Friday, April 6th is our midterm for trimester three here at Bryan Elementary. We have a fundraiser coming up for Ketcher. You can see three pictures of Ketcher. So this will be going home with students tomorrow. They're able to purchase magnets for one picture or for all three, and this goes into Ketcher's fund, and Ketcher's fund is really used to take care of Ketcher. It pays for all of his, any medical bills that he would have. So that will be going home tomorrow. Ketcher turns three on Wednesday, so Ketcher has been invited to several different classrooms throughout this building and the high school to celebrate his birthday. April 30th, we have Arbor Day, and this school, I don't know if you've ever been here, when we have Arbor Day. We've normally had very large assemblies. St. Pat's has come over. I work with Port Gosha from, he is a Bryan City arborist and a member of the Bryan Tree Commission. We are not having an assembly this year, but they are working on videos to show the benefits of trees and the history of trees, as well as how to plant the seedling, because each student here goes home with a seedling, preschool through fifth grade. So they are trying to get videos around to show the students how to take care of the seedling, how to plant the seedling. So we're really appreciative, because we know that's a lot, that's a lot of seedlings for our students that we have here. We have Write to Read Week, May 3rd through May 7th. Our motto is keep it simple this year. There's a lot of things that we wanted to do with a theme that we had previously last year, but we decided to keep it, keep our theme, our space theme, for when we can do all of our fun activities and have a literacy night. So this year, it's keeping it simple. We do have several dress-up days for the May 3rd through the May 7th, which will be shared on Facebook and media. Our Bryan Elementary PTO has given four hundred and fifty books to us to give out to our students during this week. I think since I've been in the position that I have been in, PTO has always given books back, and when they have their scholastic book fairs, they do make money off of that, but they then in turn buy books to give back to kids. So we're super excited to give away about four hundred and fifty books that week to our students. We moved Write to Read Week. It used to be in March. We moved it to May to do some of our activities outside, so our fifth graders can read with our kindergartners and be socially distant, but have more activities outside. We have preschool graduation at the Arts and Ed Building on Wednesday, May 26th. We have our first grade biography fair. This is a really busy time. I'm sure it is at the school, too. But we have our first grade biography, biography fairs, May 7th, 10th, and 14th, and that's going to be held, this is new, at the new amphitheater that is outside at the Parks and Rec. Our students will research, they will write facts, and then write a speech about their famous person. Kindergarten screening was held April 6th and 7th. Seventy-eight kids were screened. Out of the seventy-eight, there were twenty-seven potential Cub students and four no-shows. That number is slightly down this year, but August screening, we will get more students. So potential, looking at a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty students for next year in kindergarten. On kindergarten, in kindergarten, we typically have an end-of-the-year program that used to be at the Arts and Ed Building. We are going to have it at the stadium outside, and we're still working on a date to get that set up, but we're hoping to make that happen. Last, but certainly not least, bear bags. So I wanted to give an update on bear bags. So since the first of the year, we have distributed three hundred and forty-five bags. So since the first of the year, we have distributed 345 bags, an average of 26.5 per week. We have noted over the past month, a slight decline in bag requests with the numbers the past three weeks, 21, 24, and 22. And this could be due to the shorter weeks. We have been truly blessed by the huge financial supports that we have had coming in. Our bear bag balance as of March 9th was 15,878.27. And we continually have checks coming to Bryan Elementary PTO specifically for our bear bags. So we are truly grateful for people continuing to think of our bear bag program that benefits our kids here at Bryan Elementary.
Mrs. Cox, how long do you think that that will last for the financial side? How much do you see that the need is typically?
So when we, I believe, and I think, when I looked into this before, we spent about $400 a week, but that's when we were doing about 40 bags. So now we're doing 26 bags. So we have some food that's donated. So that is a, that should get us, I would hope, through the next couple of years. And this balance really hasn't changed this year, except that that's really where we started, because we're getting so many donations, plus we're also buying food. At low cost, too. We're trying to find, we have some people, Sarah Bashal is in charge of our bear bag program, and she's done a fabulous job of trying to find the cheapest prices to get foods that kids will eat. So I would say a couple of years, as long as we're continuing to replenish that. But such a healthy balance because of all the donations that have been continuing to come in. We get a lot of donations around Christmas time. People think of the kids and the bear bags. And we often get, we often get donations of food, too. We haven't had to have a spring fundraiser for the bear bags because of this, so.
Does your group, Scott?
I think, I think the Brown area foundation should do a scholarship for the kid or family to keep a seedling alive. So what would you propose that you guys should do?
I'll get the committee together.
I think that's why the videos are being produced as well, to help take care of it.
If you keep it alive, you graduate.
Thank you, Mrs. Cox.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And we'll move on then to the secondary report. See Steve was not feeling the ball, so.
Yep, again, again, due to athletics, I'll step in here. So first of all, what a tremendous job by the cast and crew of the musical Little Women. If you had the opportunity to get out this weekend, they sold out three of their four shows. Kids never seem to amaze me. I caught the last show on Sunday, and it was just probably, I don't know if that's the best one, or if you can say the best one, it was phenomenal. They just worked tremendously hard. So we thank them for their efforts, for putting on a show. They just, they rocked it out. So I don't know how they get these talents, but they just get to make. So congrats to them on a job well done. And then, a lot of this is noted at the end of our board agenda, so I'm just going to kind of cover two in one here. But it's the end of the year, as noted, testing is starting tomorrow with the middle school, high school. And then we have prom, woo-hoo! Prom is happening Saturday, May 8th, for the first time in over, well, about two years. Thank goodness, so prom, we have our Academic Booster Club Awards Ceremony, it's Monday, May 17th. And we will also administer our Outstanding Educator Award at that assembly. And that's going to be held in gymnasium this year, which is a change for spacing purposes. Senior Scholarship Night is Monday, the 24th, at the Arts and Ed Auditorium. So that's where seniors will receive all their scholarships to help with their futures. And then the big day of graduation is Sunday, May 30th. We are scheduled outside the football stadium at 2:00 PM. If for whatever reason, weather becomes a factor, we'll shift that into the gymnasium. If it comes to that, we will have to limit each graduate to having eight guests with them into that ceremony. So again, that will help with some of the COVID-related spacing that we need to follow. So a lot happening as we finish out the race to the end of the school year.
Great. All right, thanks, Mark. We'll move on to the treasurer's report and recommendations. So Kevin?
And Mr. Eric, put those slides up for me. We're going to, I was going to discuss with you very quickly just where we are year-to-date with the income tax payments as we get ready to receive the final payment of the year. And you all have a copy of this chart at your desks. This is a comparison of the January payment from the last five years. You can see that our January payment was down this year. That is entirely due to an abnormally large amount of tax return refunds that were processed in October through December. We had $61,000 worth of refunds in that three-month period. No prior year had more than $10,000 of refunds. If you add back that $50,000 excess refund, would actually get us to about $670,000, which would be right in the middle of the pack for the year. So I'm not sure why we had such a large refund in that three-month period. It's kind of an odd time for that to happen, but that is why we came in kind of low there. Go to the next slide, Mr. Eric. This is year-to-date, so three distributions that we have received. You can tell, you can see that we're down a little bit for the last two years. They're really just kind of at that fiscal year 18, which is a pretty good recovery. You remember, the very first distribution was the first distribution of the pandemic. It covered April, May, and June of 2020 is the first distribution we've received this year. And we were very off in tax return collections and in withholdings. So we recovered very well so far to get back up to that state. Now, be one of the next slide, Mr. Eric. This is our net withholdings year-to-date through that third distribution. And you can see we had a very large increase going from fiscal year 18 to fiscal year 19. A slight increase again into fiscal '20, and then because of the pandemic, those withholdings have come down. But still much stronger than fiscal year 18. And this, these lines are just $50,000 apart. And so this graph may seem very dramatic in these changes, but these numbers are actually fairly close together. $50,000 over 1.34 million is really not that much. There's not a ton of change here. On the next slide, you can see the estimated payment. So the people who make estimated payments are primarily our small business owners, who are not receiving a salary. And so they tend to make estimated payments in rather than the withholdings, since they don't have a salary to be withheld from. What's really interesting to me in this is this decline that we were already seeing in our estimated tax payments before the pandemic hit. We peaked in '18, but then saw a significant decline in '19, and a significant decline in '20. And this is, again, through December of 2019, that fiscal year '20. So this is even before we've seen any pandemic effects in those prior years. So I'm not really sure that I understand why we saw such a contraction in what is primarily our small business owners in the district. But there clearly was a trend pre-pandemic. And if anything, it's very surprising we did not see a bigger decline going from fiscal '20 to fiscal '21. Obviously, things are not as good this year as they were last year, but we have softened that curve significantly. And again, this is not a lot of money. These lines are at $10,000 intervals. So it's not a ton of money, but it's an interesting trend. And then the final slide here is just kind of combining everything together to give you a feel for the total that's going on. And you can see just that larger trend that we were talking about. A big increase to fiscal '19, basically the same amount in fiscal '20, and then a drop due to the pandemic in fiscal '21. Our expectation is that we're going to see revenues increase as we go along. The state itself is reported about a 4% collection above its estimates. So the state is doing really well with its income tax collections. And so we hope to benefit from that as well as our community continues to recover from the pandemic. We will receive the final income tax payment later this month, which will be the fourth quarter. The delay in the due dates from April 15th to May 15th won't actually affect us, unlike last year where we had some tax moved to the next quarter. April, May, and June are already paid together in July, and so we won't have any time to issue from that one month delay in the due date of the income tax. Any questions? All right. Then moving on, the cash reconciliation and the financial reports are in your packet as normal. And then for the permanent appropriation changes, we have this month, we are recognizing in the changes in appropriation to bond refunding. And so there is quite a significant increase in appropriations in the bond fund, which is a total increase in the bond fund of $6.8 million. That was entirely offset by the sale of the bonds. This is just a technical matter of making sure that we have that transaction appropriately recorded in our appropriations. Beyond that, we have in the general fund, $114,000 increase, which is primarily being driven by a $110,000 increase in the community school tuition that we are required to pay out. That is driven by our students from our district who are attending a community or charter school. Community school, of course, being what the state of Ohio calls charter schools. So that is outside of our control. The parents make the decision to send those students, and we're required to pay that tuition. The next item is the healthcare process consulting agreement for fiscal year '22. HBC is the ones that handle translating the work that we do for students who are eligible for Medicaid into Medicaid reimbursements. This is a company that we've been with for many years, does a terrific job for us. And then finally, I have the St. Patrick's auxiliary service program. This is an annual action. As Mr. Bassett mentioned earlier, we serve as the fiscal agent for their auxiliary funds. And this is just their request to set up the auxiliary fund program for the next fiscal year. Then we have some donations we'd like to recognize. $1,464 for football helmets from the Bryan Little Bears Football Program. $100 for the National Honor Society from the Kiwanis Club of Bryan. $2,750 for assemblies from the Academic Booster Club. $350 for granting the Kristen Diaz classroom from the Academic Booster Club. And finally, $300 for the National Honor Society from the Academic Booster Club.
Any questions for Kevin? Any of those recommendations? All right, well, hearing none, then I would accept a motion to approve the treasurer's report and recommendations.
So move.
Thank you, Dan.
Scott.
Thank you, Mike. Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on with old business. Not sure if we have anything to discuss there, and really in new business. Nothing comes to mind that I'm aware of. Anything from anybody? All right, so we'll go on ahead and just have Mark give it to Mr. Eric, give us our superintendent's recommendations.
Yeah, thank you, Scott. So we'll start with our administrative recommendations. We have early graduates, and actually, the first name listed there, if they are even. That is correct, and it says effective May 26, 2020. We had a unique situation with the transfers and the joint program that that individual was involved in between Bryan City Schools and Portland High School Center. She did graduate last year a few days early, if you look at the date, but it's just not been able to be processed. That date is correct. Then we also have for early graduates now is Elizabeth Renfro and Brooke Satterway. Congratulations to both of them finishing a bit early in their senior year. We have another agreement for the College Credit Plus courses, in which Bryan High School offers college credits. And this one is specifically for Lawrence College or Lawrence University, so you can see that in the exhibit. And then, as Mr. Paul noted, this is top secret. But it's probably all over social media now, so we'll see. But she and Mr. Lupo, our choir director, are proposing a joint choir and band trip together for spring break of 2022. So specifically the dates of March 17th to March 21st, which starts our spring break. As Stephanie noted, they were not able to do their, complete the trip to Toronto for COVID purposes. So they have a really nice plan, in which this upcoming year is the choir's year to go on that big trip, and the band will be joining them. And it sounds really neat. They're planning to go to Washington DC. It is still with the Bob Rogers Travel Company, which is a company that we're going to utilize this school year. But it's a few nights in the big city of DC. Some of the notable things that they're going to be partaking in is they're going to have hopefully a performance on the steps of the Jefferson Memorial. So it'll be really neat. They're also going to be able to receive a clinic from professors or directors at the University of Maryland. And then on top of that, they have a slew of attractions that they'll be partaking in. Anything from the Holocaust Memorial Museum, the US Capitol, again, if that's available, to the Arlington National Cemetery, to the changing of the wreaths and the changing of the gardens there at the cemetery, the Washington Monument, and the list goes on and on with what they're looking to partake in in Washington DC. So I'm happy for them that they're able to help recover from this school year. I know that doesn't answer all the questions for our current senior class, who had to live out this unique year. But we look forward to this possibility. I'll leave it at that possibility. We'll see where we're at in March of 2022, but we hope to be trending in the right direction at that point.
Yeah, well, I commend Mr. Lupo, too, for being able to involve the band and offer them as well, since they did miss the trip last year to Toronto. So I think that's great that they're able to work together.
Absolutely.
Hey, Mark, a quick question, if I'm allowed to ask, on a trip. Did we, we hadn't paid anything on the other trip to the Rogers Group, had we, or would that?
So some payments were coming in, some payments were being collected. However, we had a deadline, if I recall, it was like February-ish, maybe February 1st, in which we would receive that full refund if we made our decision to cancel. So we actually made that decision, I believe, in December or January. It was early enough to stop people who were giving money, but also reimburse those.
We received a full refund from the travel agency and made full refunds to all of the students and chaperones that had made payments. So no money was lost on the trip that was canceled.
That's also including insurance costs that we were charged for that as well.
Right, correct.
Because we dropped out before that.
Yeah, we had, there were two different places where we could pull the trigger. One, we would have had to pay for insurance. One, we would not. We pulled the trigger before we had to pay for the insurance.
Same program here, at this point? Correct, yeah. Same company, same stipulations, so. Yep.
Uh, yeah, oh, yeah. I'm believing. I'm getting ahead of myself. So, yeah, if there's no questions or any comments from Mark, I would accept a motion to approve superintendent's recommendations. So move. Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Deb?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and now we can move on with superintendent's personal recommendations.
Yes, we have a lengthy list of personal recommendations for this month. And you'll note as we go further down the agenda, we're preparing all of our contracts for next school year, those at least who were up for renewal. So there's some long lists here, but we'll just start with our return to work. We're glad to have John Betts back and driving bus with us, and that was effective on March 22nd. So that is nice to have him back behind the wheel, but also to help supplement our challenging size of our fleet of drivers that we have. And we continue to pursue different ways to maneuver through that. And actually, this leads me to my next topic here of the classified staff. So we are recommending for player in OBI, means onboard instructor. So we're looking to have Erica Hagman, Tristan Slicker, and Jennifer Fogelson be certified as onboard instructors. And that will alleviate Ryan Everly, our transportation director, from having to do all of those trainings for new drivers himself. They are certified, they have mental qualifications, and they will be paid as work for their time to help train new drivers or people showing interest in driving bus or running through schools. I'm very happy with that opportunity. We have a transfer of classified staff. We have Jennifer Stratton, who will be filling the shoes of Teresa Wheel. We, again, wish Teresa the best with her resignation and movement into retirement as she looks to pursue her future dreams. So Jen Streton is a current aide at the middle school, high school, so she will transfer into that secretarial role. And that is effective for the start of next school year. We have involuntary transfer on paper, however, in reality, it's a voluntary transfer. We continue to shift staff members around as we had the retirement of Julie Springer in third grade. Last board meeting, we had about four different shifts that took place. One of them was still in the midst of taking place at the time of the board meeting, so this is our final transfer with that whole process. So Paige Gansmiller will be moving to fifth grade intervention. Entering her second year of parenting lead is Caitlin Bernath. So she will again take advantage of her second year of parenting lead to stay home with her children. And then we get into our contract renewals. So we have one-year limited teaching contracts effective for next school year. Do you guys want me to read all the names, or? Go ahead. So we have our one-years, our two-years, our three-years, our four-years, our five-years, and then our continuing. And a continuing contract does require a staff member to, for lack of a better term, apply to be considered for that. They have to put that in writing and file some contractual language, and they have to meet certain stipulations to even be considered for a continuing contract. It deals with education levels and years of service. So if they've met that and applied, they do go through a rigorous evaluation during the school year to see if they do qualify for that. So we have the continuing contracts being recommended there. We have our classified substitute list. So as we continue to help out in the world of bus driving, John Schall is a teacher for us, and John is now hopping on a bus after school to help drive for some afternoon routes. So we thank him for that. And then April Slicker is going to be driving van for us. We have some students that just enrolled with the district in some unique situations when she'll be transporting them to and from the district. So that will work out nicely. We have some resignations. We have Andrew Dieter, bus driver, that was effective March twenty-ninth to pursue other employment. We have the resignation of Brandon Fisher, our head boys' basketball coach, effective April first, and that was to allow him to pursue more time with his family. We thank him for his dedication and his commitment to the boys' basketball program, and he is looking forward to some more time and time with his young children to help them grow as they pursue all of their activities. So we wish him the best of luck, and he is going to continue to teach middle school English for us here at Bryan City Schools. We also have the resignation of Thomas Hall, bus driver, effective at the end of the school year. And that moves us then into auxiliary services personnel, as Kevin noted, and as Chad also noted in his public hearing, we have services that we pay out to our local home field schools. These are specific to St. Patrick's School, so we employ Stephanie Lamore as the personnel clerk for two hours per day for ninety days. And our intervention specialist, Adriana Dopri, she is part-time, and she is at eighty percent of the day. So we recommend their continued hires at St. Patrick's Catholic School.
Any questions for Mark on those recommendations?
I have another one on, can you just explain to the new guy the difference between the contracts and what makes a one, two, four, five, continuing?
Yep.
Whether they're all continuing.
So when a new teacher is hired, they are hired on a one-year contract. The way the contract is written, they cannot be granted anything more than a one-year for their second year of teaching. So they get a one-year, a one-year, and then if they prove through the evaluation process that they're fit to continue to be employed at Bryan City Schools, then our administrators will look to recommend them for a two-year, and then when that completes, a three-year, four-year, five-year. Most of our five years will stay at five, but then you will have those few who definitely see themselves being a long-term employee here and want to not have to have the renewal process take place every five years. So then they apply for a continuing contract in which, if that's granted and approved, they do not have to go through the approval, reapproval process of a new contract every two, three, four, or five years.
So at the five-year, then they can apply, or they have to work out their five and then apply for the continuing contract?
It's really weird how it works, and I'll do the best I can without all the language of the contract in front of me, but if your educational license was granted to you before January of two thousand eleven, you have specific criteria to meet with years of service and education that you've received, whether it be your master's degree or community education. They fall under one set of circumstances to be considered for that. They also have anyone that has received a teacher education certificate after January of two thousand eleven, so that would be our newer teachers. They have to have seven years of experience before you're looking to apply for this, along with master's degree or equivalency of that through their credit and coursework that they're able to obtain over the course of time. So they have years of service, experience, and the education fees that they all have to meet the criteria for.
Do most of our teachers go that route at that point, or how does that?
Uh, yes and no, it's just, it's a personal decision.
Average is no.
Yeah, it, yeah, so you'll see these, like you see there, we've got four this school year. I would say anywhere between the ballpark of two to five every year for eleven. I'll prove that as a new contract. And they do have to go through a rigorous evaluation process that year that they apply for that. It requires them to have two full evaluations, followed by many meetings and follow-ups with their administrators to ensure that they're performing at high levels. It's also, I think that might stop some from applying at times because it is a rigorous evaluation process. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, well, if there's no other questions or comments on that, I would accept a motion to approve superintendent's personnel recommendations. So moved. Thanks, Mike.
Second.
Thank you, Deb. Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Thank you. And then we'll move on here to points of information. I know Mark has gone over some of these. Our Board of Education meeting for next month will be May tenth here at the Commons at seven PM. We have, is it our final business advisory for our committee meeting for this year will be Wednesday, May nineteenth. That'll be at seven AM. And then again, as reiterating Mark, upcoming dates will have prom Saturday, May eighth. Academic Booster Club Awards will be Monday, May seventeenth. Senior Scholarship Night will be Monday, May twenty-fourth. And then graduation will be on Sunday, May thirtieth at two PM in the football stadium, pending weather. But we're hopeful that that will be able to occur in the football stadium, so. Anything missed?
Well, we're looking forward, that is our final business advisory committee meeting, so.
Right.
I'd like to allow your schedules to attend that once we do the seasons again. Get together with that good crew.
That would be great. All right, anything else?
So I am aware of a need for executive session regarding the compensation of an employee.
Okay. Then I would accept a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Thank you, Deb. Thank you, Mike. Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Dustin? Thank you.